I call to order the Lynchburg Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, February 8th, 2023. And our first order of business is the approval of the December 14th, 2022 minutes. Everybody had a chance to look at them? Any changes? I know we had a... Kenzie, I don't think you were here.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is a comment I move to approve.
I'll second it.
All righty, all in favor? Aye? Aye? Opposed? All right. That is taken care of. And our next thing before moving on to new business, we'll be electing our 2023 Planning Commission officers.
Correct. Mr. Chair, State Code requires Planning Commissions to elect a chair and vice chair, and says that your terms shall be for one year. This is the first meeting of the calendar year, so that is what we're doing today. The duties of the chairperson are to preside at all meetings, appoint committees, rule on procedural questions, report official communication referencing positive and negative opinions, and certify official documents involving the authority of the commission. Does anyone have a nomination for the chair?
You know, I'd like to nominate Kenzie Johnson as chair.
And I'll second it.
It was fast. All right. Well, we'll go ahead and vote on that?
If there are no other nominations...
Any other questions?
For discussion?
No discussion? You're not going to object?
No, I think I'm okay with it this time.
Kenzie, it falls in that category that no good deed goes unpunished.
That's right. Okay, so we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor, Kenzie Johnson as chair, say aye. Aye? All opposed? All right, great. Welcome, chairperson.
Thank you.
Congratulations to the chair. The duties of the vice chairperson are to assume the powers of the chair in the absence of the chair, and carry out other duties as assigned by the commission. Are there any nominations for a vice chair?
I nominate Nancy Marion.
I nominate Bob Bowden. Because Nancy Marion doesn't really want to do it at all.
Well, I'll second Nancy's most... Commissioner Marion's motion of Bob Bowden if he wants to do the job.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion or any comments? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on that. All in favor of Bob Bowden as vice chair, say aye. Aye? All opposed? All right, welcome, Bob. And then the last offices...
Correct. That's typically... The role of the secretary is held by a city staff member. Their duties are to ensure attendance is taken, make sure the meeting minutes are recorded, notify members of meetings, prepare the agendas, and maintain files of official Planning Commission records. Give notice of all meetings, public hearings, and public meetings, provide to the city council reports and recommendations of the commission, and to attend to the correspondence for the execution of the duties and functions of the commission. Typically, that role has been held by the city planner, Tom Martin. I would nominate Tom Martin to continue in that role.
Second, just so it's official.
Yeah, actually, I can't make the motion. The commission has to.
And I don't think we can really comment. All right. All in favor of...
Just so the record's clear, Mr. Bowden nominated you, Tom, and I'll second the nomination.
That's good.
Perfect.
I agree with that.
All right, any other comments? All right, all in favor of Tom Martin as secretary, say aye. Aye? All opposed? Great, so we have a new slate. And I think that means Kenzie will get to run the show today.
Pass the gavel.
All right.
For someone up the gavel.
There you go.
Thank you.
If it gets rowdy, use that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. The next order of business is to hold the public hearing regarding the following petition of AHC Investments LLC for a conditional use permit in a B3 community business district to allow the renovation of three townhomes into two household units duplexes at 1312, 1316, and 1316 and 1/2 Church Street. And at this point, I need to recuse myself for personal reasons, so I'll step out, and y'all just let me know.
Your vice chair in the hot seat right away. Um... Thank you, members of Planning Commission. The purpose of this petition is to allow the renovation, as the chair said, of three townhomes into duplexes in a B3 community business district. The subject properties are zoned to B3, and duplexes are permitted in the B3 district upon approval of a conditional use permit from city council. The city's comprehensive plan, Future Land Use Map, recommends a downtown use for these properties. Downtown is our central commercial core, and appropriately contains a mix of retail, entertainment, restaurant, office, employment, residential, public parks, and institutional uses. These areas should retain their urban character. Each of the three properties contains a two-story townhome, all constructed in 1914. If the CUP petition is approved, three neighboring townhomes would be renovated from single household units into duplexes. The area is surrounded by residential and community-oriented uses. The petition is supported by the Future Land Use Map designation of downtown, and the redevelopment of the existing structures would promote the reuse of historic properties. The proposed renovation of the existing townhomes should have little to no negative impact on the area. The city's technical review committee reviewed this petition on January 18th, and there were no major comments of concern. Planning staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit.
Thank you, Rachel.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. May I ask a question? I don't have to recuse myself because I live next door to this property, do I? I don't have any financial interest in it.
I don't believe there's any appearance of a conflict. You have no financial dealings with them or...
Right. Okay.
Okay, with that cleared up, we'll open the public forum. Is there anybody here to speak on behalf of this petition? If you could come forward and sign your name.
My name is William Cook. And yeah, we're just looking to, you know, bring some improvements to a... to some pretty historic and important architecturally units in the downtown Lynchburg area. You know, I think the units, when originally built, were all connected multifamily structures. And now, looking at what we're trying to do is simply get the highest best use while trying to maximize affordable housing in downtown, so.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, guys, for considering the request.
What I was going to ask, is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anybody who'd like to speak negatively about this or against this petition? With that, we'll close the public hearing and open it up for questions.
What kind of parking do you expect to need for these? You're going to have two units per apartment, so... I mean, per building. So you'd have six units.
Correct. We're in talks with neighbors and neighboring organizations about figuring out some sort of rental lease, but a parking spot per unit. However, due to the location, you know, these are very... They really lean themselves very well to walkability, bikability throughout downtown, so at the most, one per unit, but... Which we'll find a way to work something out there with the private.
These are currently in use? The townhomes are currently in use?
One of them is condemned, and two of them are... One was being used as an office prior, and the other was being used as a single-family dwelling, but I think it housed multiple generations of family.
So I guess to answer your question, then all the parking was on the street then?
Correct.
For those, there wasn't an issue?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. Anybody else?
Curiously, is this a fenced-in area, or is this open?
On the back?
Yeah.
Side, it's open. We've already gone through and trimmed it up a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've lived down here for a long time. I lived on Washington Street, and I've seen those units with quite a few cars per unit. So I don't think parking would be an issue. I think it's a good reuse of buildings that probably very well underutilized right now. I'd make a motion to support the petition.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion carries. So obviously, you'll go in, and good luck with city council.
Thank you, guys, very much. Appreciate it, Commissioner.
Thank you.
The next order of business, I guess I ought to wait till Kenzie gets back, huh? The next order of business is a petition of library holdings to rezone land around the... We lost everybody. Oh, there's Rachel.
Well, maybe she...
Here's Rachel. I told her she had it all, so I shouldn't worry about it. To rezone approximately two in 5400ths acres located at 434 Rivermont Avenue and 422, 426, 434, 440, and 442 Victoria Avenue from B4C Urban Commercial District Conditional and R4 High Density Residential District to B4C Urban Commercial District Conditional. Rather than reading the rest of it, would you like to go ahead and present the motion?
As stated, the purpose of this petition is to rezone the property to allow the adaptive reuse of the Jones Memorial Library Building at 434 Rivermont Avenue, and to allow the construction of a new hotel on three of the Victoria Avenue properties. This petition would provide for the restoration and adaptive reuse of a historic Lynchburg landmark. The Jones Memorial Library was the second oldest public library in Virginia, and has been a prominent feature on Rivermont Avenue since it opened in 1908. However, the building has been vacant since 2008 and is falling into disrepair. The library was rezoned from R4 High Density Residential District to B6C Riverfront Business District in 2014. B6 later became the B4 that we see now, urban commercial, when the zoning ordinance was rewritten in 2016. That rezoning included proffers limiting the use of the building to event, office, and educational uses. If this rezoning petition is approved, the historic library building would be restored and renovated to contain restaurant dining facilities, a hotel lobby, outdoor seating, guest suites, and minor additions to support its reuse. Two existing structures located at 440 and 442 Victoria Avenue would be used as a hotel amenity/support. One existing structure located at 422 Victoria would be demolished, and a new hotel building and parking deck would be constructed on that parcel, 422 and 426 Victoria. A pedestrian bridge would connect the historic Jones Memorial Library with the new hotel building. The proposed hotel would have a total of 107 guest rooms, and would contain 107 parking spaces in a structured garage beneath the hotel. The petitioner did conduct a traffic impact study, which analyzed existing conditions and future conditions under the proposed development. The city of Lynchburg had also conducted its own traffic study in 2020 to address the intersection of Rivermont Avenue, D Street, and Victoria Avenue, which is the vicinity of Bacon Street Bagels. Five alternatives were looked at with that study, and the recommended improvement was a roundabout. City staff has recommended that roundabout be included in our capital improvements program, which is pending adoption by city council. The proposed roundabout is needed regardless of the hotel development, and would significantly improve the current conditions, and will still function adequately in the future with the proposed development and the traffic it would generate. Since there may be a delay between the proposed roundabout and the opening of this hotel, the study recommends alternative interim improvements, which the petitioner has voluntarily proffered to implement. Those include prohibiting left turns from Victoria Avenue towards downtown. Left turns would be rerouted up to Library Street, where there are less conflict points with D Street and others coming in. There would also be a loading zone provided on Victoria Avenue to facilitate hotel deliveries. In summary, it's often difficult, as we've seen with this property that's been sitting for some time. It's difficult to find viable uses for large historic structures like this. It requires significant investment to be adapted for a modern use, and the proposed rezoning would facilitate the reuse of the landmark that's been sitting vacant for almost 15 years and is in decline. The existing library is an architecturally significant site, but attempts, you know, past attempts that we've seen in the city to revitalize the project have not been viable. So the proposed new building may be what this site needs to make it a possibility. The proposed project uses an innovative solution to parking by providing structured spaces under the new hotel. And while the parking is sufficient for hotel guests, the petitioner is encouraged from staff to continue pursuing other supplemental parking solutions for hotel employees and visitors to restaurants, et cetera. The city's technical review committee reviewed the petition on November 22nd, 2022. Comments have been addressed, or will be addressed, at final site plan phase. The library building and property is also located within the Rivermont Avenue Historic District, which requires approval for any exterior modifications to the property. So HPC, or Historic Preservation Commission, has reviewed the conceptual proposal at their meeting in December, and granted a certificate of appropriateness for the location of the proposed building additions and the pedestrian bridge between the old structure and the new structure. HPC will need to approve final designs and materials prior to building permits being issued. Planning staff recommends approval of the project with the proffers as outlined in the report.
Who is here to speak on behalf of this petition? If you could state your name and sign in, please.
Hello, my name is Brian Cosman. I'm with Hurt &amp; Profit, and we're with the design team that is working with the owner on this project. I'd like to thank Rachel for the thorough introduction of the project. I don't know that there's a whole lot more that I can add, other than the owners and the design team are excited to work with the city and finally get this reuse of this building moving forward and bring this potentially exciting project to the city. Can I get to answer any questions or details on the traffic study or any other issues?
Yeah, we might ask you to come back up.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you. Thank you for now. Is there anybody else here that would like to speak in favor of the petition? Please come up. And sign your name if you don't mind.
Sign my name?
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephen Kozakowski. I'm a local resident of the Rivermont area and own property there as well, too, and drive by the library almost every single day, and love the architecture and the historical nature of the property. And just from what we've seen so far of this and what's been posted publicly, it would be pretty exciting to see this property get revamped and revitalized, but also keeping with the historical architecture and the spirit of the library as well, too. And the option of having more amenities in Lynchburg is always exciting near downtown. I think it would be a fantastic addition to have to our area, and excited for what it could do for that library. I think it'll bring a lot more people into that historic place. I've been inside of it before and saw... I have seen all the amazing architecture and design inside, and I think more people should get a chance to see that as well, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Jay Oshren. I don't live in Lynchburg, but I own two properties that are near to the proposed development, 510 Victoria and 306 Cabell. And I've been watching the old library decay and fall into disrepair for years, and was very excited to learn that it may finally be saved and repurposed. I am greatly in favor of this development, although I'm still learning a little bit about it. What concerns me, and I know you've covered this already with the roundabout, but what concerns... I wrote this two months ago, and I just have to tell you, I have to say it. What concerns me is the intersection of Rivermont, D Street, Victoria. It was already a dangerous intersection before the bagel shop opened, and now it's even worse. Obviously, there will need to be some improvement to the intersection with the new hotel, and I implore the city to use a roundabout here instead of a signalized intersection. There are seven compelling reasons, all supported by extensive research. One, safer for cars. The tight circle of a roundabout forces drivers to slow down, and the most severe types of intersection crashes, right angle, left turn, and head-on collisions are unlikely. They are particularly appropriate for intersections with complex geometry like this one. Two, they're safer for pedestrians. Pedestrians walk on sidewalks around the perimeter and cross only one direction of traffic at a time. Crossing distances are relatively short, and traffic speeds are lower than at traditional intersections. They're cheaper. Number three, while the initial construction cost of a roundabout varies site by site, its maintenance usually is cheaper than for intersections with signals. The service life of a roundabout is significantly longer, approximately 25 years, compared with 10 years for a typical traffic signal. Four, they're less polluting. Less idling reduces vehicle emissions and fuel consumption. Five, less time wasting. Research shows that traffic flow improves after traditional intersections are converted to roundabouts. Six, user acceptance. Follow-up surveys conducted after roundabouts have been in place for more than one year found the level of public support increased from about 35% to 70% on average. More aesthetically pleasing, who thinks of a traffic light as beautiful? At a roundabout, you can place a sculpture or a tree in the middle. It is an entryway into the city. This would be a great place to celebrate that. The state of Virginia has adopted roundabout-first policies, requiring that roundabouts be considered a preferred alternative when building new intersections. Please make the right move here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to remind everyone, we have a three-minute limit for an individual, and what's the...
Ten.
Ten minutes for if you're representing a group?
My name is Ed Hopkins. I own property at the corner of Library and Victoria. I've watched that property at the Library Street for 25 years. As you probably know, the Patrick Henry Institute owned the property. They restored it on the inside. It was beautiful. But the last 15 years, it's just gone downhill. There's a lot of vagrancy. There's a lot of neglect. It's a beautiful building. It needs to be saved. It's really an anchor to Lower Rivermont, which is being revitalized, and that would be just a huge step towards the further beautification, revitalization of not only Lower Rivermont, but the city of Lynchburg. So it's a beautiful historic building. I can't see any downside to this. This is a viable plan. I guess the first viable plan that has been put forth, so I strongly encourage it to go forward. I think it will be great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anybody opposing? Oh, no. Is somebody else coming up? Yep, please, come on up. Sorry, we still have one more in favor, correct?
Yes.
In favor, yes.
Hi, my name is William Georges. I moved to Lynchburg about three years ago from New York. I was a city boy my whole life, and I've really enjoyed the quaintness of Virginia and of Lynchburg. I've really appreciated it. I've lived on Denver Avenue by Rivermont, and I've recently moved to Victoria Avenue, just a few blocks down from this project. I think it's a great idea. I think that the building is a beautiful building that needs to be saved, and that's really important to save the history behind the building. And I think that it'll give us more nightlife options and places to eat, you know, down near downtown, and I think it'll expand the downtown area. So thank you, and I hope you vote in favor of this project.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Council, for your time. My name is Michelle Thomas, and I live and work locally. I live in the Rivermont area as well. I'm just in agreeance with everyone else. I moved to Lynchburg about 15 years ago now. Love living here. I love the rich history and architecture, and I think this project is a great way to help maintain that history, celebrate the architecture, and a great way to also bring in more tourism and healthy business. Thank you.
Hi, how are you?
How are you? I'm good.
If you wouldn't mind signing your name, please, on that, and just let us know who you are, and then whatever you'd like to say.
So my name is Alexia Linas, and this is my husband, Jacqueline Linas, and our daughter, Erika Linas. We actually live Lower Rivermont, so we were able to actually kind of see how it's been kind of growing a little bit, and we've been here for the past, I would say, eight years now. And we're in favor of the library, because it's just... I think it's like a great opportunity. It's a beautiful building, and I think that it'll be just a great addition to Lynchburg, and just how Lynchburg has opportunity to continue to grow and just continue to be beautiful and beautified and revitalized, and just bring more things to offer here as well, so.
Yeah, honestly, she pretty much said everything that I was supposed to say. And we're really excited about this project. I know it's going to be a good, a great extension to downtown, and we are very excited. When we heard and we see the project, even on Facebook, we think it's going to be amazing for the city. It's going to be a great plan. We love it.
Just change, like, Lower Rivermont.
Yes.
Totally. You know, it has so many beautiful homes, and it's just... It'll just start the stepping stone and keep it moving, and really just show what it can really be, you know, towards the end, so.
Yes. Did I want to say anything?
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the petition? Okay, no? So now we'll ask for anybody in opposition to come forward.
Members of the Lynchburg City Planning Commission, good afternoon, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to weigh in on this project. My name is Catherine Mosley Brown, and I'm the executive director of the Lynchburg Historical Foundation, which you would think I would not be opposing this project. Since 1972, our organization has promoted the preservation of Lynchburg's rich history and architectural legacy, and I'm happy to report that we do have a vibrant restoration climate in Lynchburg. As proposed, this project is not supported by the board of the Lynchburg Historical Foundation. If the design does not adhere to the Department of Interior's regulation that addition to an historic building matched the original in scale and mass, it severely... It severely overshadows the existing Jones Memorial Library building. What confounds us is that CGMW has done many projects in the past that have adhered to this requirement. The addition to the academy is one such example. The materials are different, the architecture is completely different, and yet, the original academy building remains the primary focus. The Board of Directors of Lynchburg Historical Foundation respectfully requests that the Planning Commission take this in to consideration before approving this matter.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in opposition to the petition? Okay, at this point, the public hearing is closed. Commissioners, I'm sure we have some questions for city staff or the petitioners.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
You may want to get the petitioner an opportunity to vote.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Would you like to give a rebuttal for...
Can we...
Sure.
Good afternoon, I'm Mike Griffin with CGMW Architecture. So I wanted to speak just briefly to Mrs. Brown's comments about scale and adjacency. When we first studied the, the project and the way to best utilize the site and the adjacent sites, several of our options were to consider building the addition for the rooms on the actual 434 parcel. With our understanding and experience with the Department, the Secretary of the Department of Interior Standards, we felt like it was the best option to minimize the additions that actually touched the historic parcel, the historic property of the library itself. We've, in our design, we show small additions for vertical circulation and other support spaces, and then we intentionally made the move to utilize the bridge to go over Victoria and have most of the construction across the street, separating most of the functions, the parking, the event center, and the guest, most of the guest rooms onto those other parcels, which are not of the part of the National Historic District listing, nor are they part of the local district, the local historic district. So it was an intentional move to, to put most of the construction across the street to respect the 1908 building. Yes?
I do have a question, and it's beyond the purview, the specific purview of our consideration, but, because it's in your business plan, but are you all gonna pursue historic tax credits?
The petitioner's undecided about that at this time, but what we have done with the design to date is always keeping that in mind, so that if they desire that, the design as we have developed to date would, in our opinion, meet approval of DHR and National Park Service.
Just, just for my clarification, the, the structure across the street, based on federal, federal guidelines, since it's across the street, those guidelines of changing the structure are not the issue at this point.
They would not be under the purview of DHR and National Park Service. That's correct.
And I have a question too. From my understanding of the historic district, the main building is in a historic district, correct?
That's correct.
On Rivermont?
Yes.
But Victoria Avenue is not. Is that right?
That's correct.
So that...
Those parcels on the, on the other side of Victoria...
Other side.
That's correct.
Are not in a historic district.
Not in the district.
The 434 Rivermont, the library parcel is in a local historic district, which our HPC has, you know, authority over to approve or deny changes.
Right.
Exterior changes. The property on Victoria Avenue is in a state and national historic district, which we don't control, but those, the benefit of a state and national historic district is tax credits, but that would, that would not apply in the case of a new construction building.
Okay. My question, having, having lived in historic districts pretty much all of my life in Lynchburg, my understanding was that if you added on to your historic house, you're not supposed to have it look like the original. Isn't that, isn't that what the standards say?
That's correct.
That you have to make sure it's, it's apparent to anybody that this was added later, and this was the original.
That's correct. The word that the, the guidelines use is compatibility, or compatible construction or compatible appearance. They certainly, the secretary certainly doesn't want creating fake history by exactly replicating the design of the historic building.
And, two, the, I mean, the houses, I don't, I don't remember now what houses were on the two vacant lots, but I, I do know the house that would have to be torn down, and, I mean, even if you tried to replicate that architecture, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make a whole lot of sense. I mean, you can't build a hotel like that little house that's gonna be torn down, but it, it just seems to me it would have to be a completely different look than anything that's there.
Our initial designs for the construction across the street, again, have been in an effort to be compatible to the historic building, but to not replicate and to be subservient to the, to the Jones Memorial Library, so it can shine.
Tell me something, if you're looking at it from the avenue itself, would you see the, would you see the new building?
From, from Rivermont?
From Rivermont.
You would. Rachel, there's images, keep going to the, the, about three or four more pages where there's four renderings. Keep, past all the line drawings. I think it's towards the end of our documents, right here. These are, are several images that, that we have rendered with our model. You can, you can see, and, and I think the thing to note, that all of these are as viewed by somebody that might be about 45 feet tall. None of them are, they're all above a, a natural perspective, but we wanted to, to capture as much as possible there, so you can see the massing of the addition relative to the massing and scale of the, of the library. The, the two on the top are from generally the area of the bridge as you come across from downtown, and then you can, you can see the one side view, kind of pulled back from library.
Right.
And then the bottom right is right along the edge of the street on Rivermont, and I think that's one of the ones that's the most telling, as you're coming downhill on Rivermont, how you see that the, the dome and the main structure of the library in the forefront are really the focus of attention, and then the addition building, or the new construction building across the street, visible, but I think that it is an appropriate scale based on its distance from the historic building.
So, even though the new builder, building is taller, isn't it? It's, it doesn't loom over the old building, because you're always seeing the old building. I mean, if you're down on Rivermont, you're way down below.
Right. The way that this is designed right now, the top of the, the new construction's, 12 feet, is 12 feet above the top of the dome.
Okay. And what color is the new construction?
Some of our initial renderings on the next page, we were looking at a complementary brick for perhaps that building. It may be a natural or a cast stone, and you can see, this is an earlier rendering where the building was actually a little bit taller when we were only on the two parcels. But what we imagine doing at the event center level is having a change in material. If you go back one image, in this current design as proposed, we have stepped the event center facade back about 10 or 12 feet from the facade of the guest rooms, again, to kind of reduce the, the mass of the building visually.
The event center is the top floor?
Is the top floor. You can kind of see in the, in the top-left and top-right images how it is set back a little bit and is shorter than the, the other, the floors for the guest rooms. And we envision on, in the top, in those two images, that front corner would be an outdoor space to support the event center, as part of the event center.
Thank you.
Curiously, the, the street that runs between the two buildings, is there any, what's the foot traffic look like through that area? I'm just curious.
On Victoria, between library and the, the bottom, the, there are, at the bottom of Victoria, there are two residences that are rental properties, and then two of the parcels are now owned by the petitioner. When I've been over there, I have interacted with folks. Most folks that are coming up Rivermont, if they're going into further up Victoria Avenue, they're usually walking up Rivermont, then library, and then onto Victoria. But it's only been a couple of folks that I've...
Yeah, I'm just curious to know what that potential foot traffic might look like. And the reason why I bring it up is for just obviously safety, safety purposes as cars can travel through to get to the, whatever their respective destinations are.
I think that, you know, with the, the spaces that we're intending to have, both in the library and then with the event center, I think that would be a good thing in terms of visibility, interaction, eyes on the street.
With the pedestrian bridge, do you have vision of most of the track, the foot traffic between the two buildings utilizing the pedestrian bridge?
We do, yes. Guests would arrive in the historic building, in the historic library, and that's where the lobby and lounge and check-in would be, and then there would be an opportunity in some of our new construction addition to go up one floor, around the back, and across. You know, if, if they're self-parking, they would be able to park and then go right up an elevator over on that side.
Yeah, I guess, well, let me ask this question before. Just to be, just to be clear, Rachel, the, the roundabout that you discussed is completely separate from this project and be something that the city would be doing?
It is. That is something that the city is looking at regardless of whether the...
What they did.
The hotel happens, whether, you know, it was, it was in conversations before this project ever came up.
Sure. But it's not necess, I mean, it's, there's not any reason to believe that that would be done before the, the hotel would actually be under, in, in use.
Most likely not, which is why they had recommended some interim measures in that traffic study in anticipation of the roundabout being forthcoming.
Because I think, you know, because I wonder if, in my mind, if you had the roundabout, that would slow a lot of the traffic coming, you know, up, up Victoria, but if you have speed bumps or some kind of traffic coming before, then I think you're gonna solve the same problem. So I think that, that might be the, that might be the answer to what I'm looking for as far as flow underneath the bridge, underneath the, along Victoria is essentially what I'm trying to say.
Mr. Val, I will say that although, although the CIP is obviously just now being prepared and obviously has to be approved by Council, staff's thought is that the roundabout would coincide or come shortly thereafter the opening of the hotel facility. So we're trying to move that design and construction up.
Sure.
I believe, I heard at the meeting on Monday, that it's probably about a two-year construction time and maybe another eight months of design, something like that, so about three years. So we're thinking we could work within the same time schedule.
Because I think, for, for me, that would be the, you know, the flow around there would be the, would be the big issue. I mean, when you talk, Mr. Griffin, about people coming in the front, I mean, we're on valet park and put everybody in the back, pretty much.
That's, that's, that's the idea.
Because it seems to me, just, just looking at it, that based on the fact that, that the Jones Memorial Building, the current Jones Memorial Building is situated close enough to Rivermont Avenue, and the new buildings would be far enough back, that that separation would solve a lot of the same problem, or a lot of the same ultimate effect that you have at the academy, with the possible exception of why the academy's, because the land drops off. But if the masses that you're showing here are representative, you know, I think, you know, it's a pretty, pretty elegant way to solve a problem, in my mind.
Thank you.
Given a little bit of a backdrop, letting the, letting the library building come forward, getting done what you have to get done space-wise, in a way that's not gonna take over the whole neighborhood and turn it into an eyesore. Because I do think it's important, you know, Tom, you talked about this, is, this is, this is a way downtown. This is a gateway, in a sense, and I think that defended like that makes sense.
So before we move on to any other things that I'm sure we want to talk about, I'd like to offer the opposing group their chance to, to give a rebuttal to the rebuttal, and because you are representing a group and not an individual, you do have the, the right to do that, if you'd like.
It wasn't the design, it wasn't the materials, and we still feel that that building, even coming up the street, at certain points overpowers and overshadows the Jones Memorial Building. It's, you know, we understand that the materials should be substantially different, and the design should be substantially different, is to not try and mimic the Jones Memorial Library, the, the, the architecture there. What we, what we are having a problem with is that it, it just won't...
Could you come forward? Sorry, I think we're having a hard time hearing you. I'm sorry. I appreciate, I appreciate that.
That's okay.
So we didn't have a problem with the design or the materials or anything like that, because we understood that they should be substantially different from what is existing with the Jones Memorial Library. What we have a problem with is at different points coming down and going up the avenue, that it substantially overshadows the Jones Memorial Building, and, and doesn't, and doesn't let it shine like it should, and let it be the focal point like it should, and we would like the skyline moved down a little bit of, of the addition. That's, you know, we understand, you know, and we understand that it's not in the historic district, and their work around to put it, the bridge over there makes it not a requirement, but it still substantially alters the, the view. And that's the board's, the LHF board's problem with it. Okay.
Sure. I can remember. Good night. I'm sorry, I have a question under your name, and I didn't bring a pen. Could I ask you some more questions about landscaping? Of course, your little models show not a stick, or tree, a bush, or anything, so I'm sure there'll be some landscaping. Will there be trees that, that soften the look of the big hotel in the back?
One of the things that we would do, that we haven't yet had a chance to do, is to research the intent, the original Brumer Pond design that was on that site currently. You know, what's there is kind of scraggly around the edges, so we imagine a, a new vision for the, the lower part of the site, specifically, you know, on the 434 property. The, the properties across the street on Victoria, we've got it set back, that, the new construction, we have it set back so that it's in line with the adjacent houses, so there may be an opportunity... So, there may be an opportunity for some, for some minor streetscaping on that side of the street. But we would imagine most of that happening on, on the library parcel.
Yeah, we're just taking two houses from the library.
Uh, we do not intend to put two houses on the parcel.
But the, the, on Victoria, the way the lot lies, it, or it, is there, does there have to be any fill brought in? Or is it, is there, is there, it just looks like it drops off. And so, I was trying, I was driving by there the other day. I was trying to imagine like a massive, what, five window, you know, or I don't know how many room deep, you know? I, I was just wondering.
Right.
If...
Could you go to the, um, the...
If any of that was on fill, or if that was all going to be on what's there right now?
What we understand is that the former D Street Bridge is on those two parcels. Twenty-eight and thirty-four, the two vacant parcels. Um, there is some fill on those parcels. And yes, it does, all of those parcels slope pretty significantly. Um, and so, we are in the Hill City. We're taking advantage of that slope, um, in one way because, um, you know, Victoria Avenue, um, has, has some grade to it. And what we're doing with our parking is taking advantage of that natural grade on Victoria for the three different levels of parking that we've designed. There's actually 20 feet of fall across those three parcels, and that allows us three entries into the parking, the three separate layer, levels.
That makes sense.
We, it does drop off quite a bit to the back. Um, and there's a good bit of foundation and structural work that would be required as part of the project back there just because of the height. And it's something we recognize, yeah.
For the parking, are you not going to have, does that mean you don't have to have any ramps inside?
As we have it designed right now, they are three separate levels. Um, there may be an advantage, if we can, to have them connected. Um, right now, it's a conceptual design. We've got the, um, number of spaces to match the number of guest rooms. So, we'll, certainly we'll be looking at that, the connectivity between those levels as we move forward.
It's just hard to, it's hard to envision with the, the drawing that, that you have, the rendering, just because it, it, you know, it looks like a gradual... Right, that's what I'm saying. Oh, that's, that's looking at it from the front. Got it. Okay. That makes sense.
You're looking at the...
I was looking at the front.
Front elevation.
And not from the side. Now, I see from the side. There it is. It's a little better. Okay. When, when they did the traffic study or, or when, when the city looked into technical committee, did, do we know if, if the off-street parking around there is utilized by the, by the people that live in the neighborhood? You know how some, some neighborhoods, you know, really utilize off-street parking? Um, and I just didn't know if, if that was looked into at all, or...
Are you asking about on-street or off-street?
On-street, on-street parking.
Um, so, what we have heard from the neighbors on Victoria Ave is, you know, it's become increasingly challenging with the bagel shop there, um, with their on-street parking. You know, we did hear from one in particular concerned about just the street width and, um, kind of the shoulders that get muddied up because there's really not a curb. Public Works is looking into whether they can provide some shoulder fill gravel for those folks. But I'm not sure how, what you were asking about, how it relates to the roundabout?
Well, not really the roundabout, but, you know, when, um, there, there was a section in there that was talking about doing away with one side of the street on, um, Library Street. And, you know, whereas there was, there used to be two sides, but they're doing away with one side and then making one side just specific to, to the residents. So, I was just, just, it was just something I thought about as I was reading through.
What, what was in the study for the parking?
Specifically on Library Street, on-street parking will remain on the west side, which is where the two houses are right now. So, those, those houses would be able to use on-street parking. And as part of this project to make, to help get width for the parking and two-way traffic on library, we would make it no parking on the street, on the east side of library, which is the library side of the street.
Okay.
And also limiting, uh, prohibiting parking within 50 feet, 50 feet of the intersection, which would, um, free up visibility for people trying to make that left.
Right.
They'll need to do that to come downtown.
Yeah, that's going to affect Bagel, the Bagel Shop significantly. Because, I mean, I'm sure y'all seen the parking situation. I mean, that's where everybody parks is up Victoria and right up on that side of Rivermont. Um, but...
Did, did we not get any, um, letters or any, from anybody who lives on Victoria opposed to this? That's telling.
Uh-huh.
We, we did get a few inquiries. We did get a, I mean, we did get a few inquiries. Um, and, you know, I, I sent them the, the information that had been submitted, but no, no letters of opposition, so...
Since Nancy brought it up, of course, Nancy, you were at the, the open house on Monday as well as I was. And there was only one resident of Victoria Avenue that I spoke to. Uh, he actually started to speak to me. And I, it's the gentleman that lives on Victoria and is, I think it's his grandmother's house, would be the one, the house that you're going to have to take down for this project. He couldn't have been any more enthusiastic. He lives on the street still, plus he's got relatives on the street. So, uh, and then, as you said, Nancy, it's pretty telling that there's nobody from the neighborhood here. If you remember when we considered the, the last time that Jones Library came up for the conditional use permit, it was a, just a, and people were coming out of woodwork. I think it was one of the most attended meetings that I remember for the years I've been on the planning commission from, from neighbors that were opposed to, uh, that particular plan. And of course, it never came to pass, which when we closed the public meeting, I'll make a couple of comments about that as well. But, uh, yeah, since Nancy brought it up, yeah, I think it's very telling that there's nobody here. And the people that I've talked to, the one person I did talk to was incredibly enthusiastic. I can't remember what the gentleman's name was.
I think I should close the public hearing, which I might, I maybe should have done a few minutes ago. But at this point, the public hearing is closed. Um, and I know, continue to ask our questions to the staff or the petitioner.
I'd just comment, following up with Cham, you know, a few years ago, we heard the petition for the redevelopment of a school. And, um, and it was very heavily attended. There's a lot of the people on the street, and it happened to be like two houses from me, you know? And they were really, uh, it was a pretty vocal group. I appreciate that people who live in the neighborhood are coming out to support this. And I think that's telling. We saw the same thing. We saw people who were squatting behind the school. They were just kind of hanging out back there during the day or sleeping there. So, changing a facility like this into something that's useful to me is a huge boon for the city. I think it's a really good thing. And I've talked to a major developer in the same area, and he's, he's been very supportive of this. I think it's good for everybody. So, that's something I, I appreciate, the, the petition and the work put into it.
Yeah, interestingly, Shanda Rowe, who's the chairman of the HPC, was at the open house on, on Monday as well. And she and I talked, and I'm not talking for Shanda, uh, but, you know, she didn't, you know, it passed the HPC vote. So, uh, she seemed to be pretty comfortable with the, with, with everything, uh, that has been planned. I'm not going to call the developer out. I know he's here in attendance. But I'd just like to thank him because I think he's got some vision, uh, and is going to make the best possible use of the building. You know, it's, it's, some people have already commented, it sat there for 15 years. And I drive past it a couple of times a week at least, or almost every day. And I've talked to a number of developers who have done downtown projects, and none of them had, none of them had any interest in pursuing, uh, the Jones Library in this fashion. And as I said, I'm just really, really thankful that it looks like we've got a, a chance to get the building returned to a useful property. Uh, and I'm, I'm going to vote, when the vote comes up, I'm going to vote in favor of the, of the petition.
Any more comments?
I, um, I would move to approve the petition as submitted.
I'll second. I've only seconded a couple. You can have a day.
Any additional comments the commissioners would like to add? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Congratulations and good luck with the city council. All right, so, next. I don't think we have any other, do we have any, um, old business or do we do that, old business, new business?
I don't think there's anything.
Okay. Our next meeting is February 22nd. Do you have...
Motion. I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.